I started out in my days. I was creating a flash. And we're putting a crew beat out this day.
But it's exciting.
You said you're not taking one brand out of the water. That's amazing. I have to do this a lot. Yeah. I know. No, I don't need you.
I'm not sure who needs them.
Well, yeah, I don't need them. Just this.
I need them. I just there. I need them. They're expensive. Or maybe.
We actually we didn't try. Well, it's creative. But you know.
So you didn't name it.
Totally. Actually, right. Yeah, everyone's. Yeah, and Steve. Lou Boo. Yeah, I'll give you two more to say. And. Charlie. Everybody. Pulling me to order before they. So you know what? I love this agent. It's the plan. We're going to need six of them. This is probably.
In this. So.
Note that in the first team fifteen years, it was going to be inspired in Denver. It was strongly related to CER. There was some original ones.
The special department. Yeah, I've got one for Marshall.
Well, there's been some changes.
I'm sorry.
There's some changes there.
Yes, yes, yes. You want me to start?
Sure.
Okay. Hi, again, my name is Joe Perrino with In Architects and we have Andrew Gerscappero and Bob Zolupi from Bassett. And we did. We're we got. We really want to treat this meeting as kind of a working session and get you up to date on where we are with the project. I know very soon when we when we have a when we have our public meeting for the planning board, we're going to have to submit our final drawings so that you can. This is the.
Public hearing, I think.
Public. Public hearing. Yeah. So. We were we were shooting for the February twenty first, I think it was. That was what our goal was. We're not going to meet that goal because we have to get a lot more information. So we were hoping to set up that public hearing to be on March, the next.
March.
Okay. Yeah.
Is there a.
With with. With the show. Especially.
Clock running or? No, okay.
Okay.
The only clock that runs is. After the public hearing, some of these. Yeah, that's. Those are fine. Those bring it to. Done, okay. Right, great.
So. So just to bring you up to date, one of the the conditions of our special permit was to kind of look at the roads and the traffic and the pedestrian traffic. So kind of looking at road widths, road sidewalks, things like that. So and not not necessarily a traffic study where they count cars because, you know, there's not many cars. So we all know that, so there's no sense in counting cars. We just wanted to kind of look at the roads and the sidewalks and just kind of report back to them. Not to say that that would be part of the project or not, but they wanted to get an assessment.
When I when I left my house this morning, it started sliding. I was thinking though.
Of April Road?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a lot of oysters today, you know, and today would have been those one of those days that are tough for that road. Sure, sure. So we are we are doing that. We haven't done that yet. We need to. So we that's going to take some time. The other thing that we're we're kind of working towards, we're hopefully having our geotechnical engineer go up there and do borrowings on February eighth. Now, to do that, we need to clear out a lot of the trees so that we can get the rig in there. So to do that, we need to, and it's next week, right about that, we're going to have somebody go up there, a surveyor, and mark out where all the clearing has to be. Then we're going to bring a couple of contractors up there so they can see where the marks are and give us a price so that we can get a good contractor to go up there and do that. So we're going to need some, you know, probably two or three contractors to go up there and get a price for us. So those things have to happen before we can get our geotechnical up there. But we're shooting for February. So at that time, so later this week, Bob and Scott, our engineer that was here before they presented, and somebody else, somebody from the village in TPW, right? Metro Telling. Metro Telling is they're going to meet hopefully Friday, right? And they're going to start assessing the road and start that process. So that that's one track that we're working on. The other. The other condition was the water and where that groundwater is based on our, you know, our heights. And so can't get that till we get. Technical up there, figuring that out. And then the third one was the power and electrical power. We just got Sage Engineering, a mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineering firm out of Albany. And we just had a kickoff meeting yesterday, so they're starting on a project so that they can figure out, you know, what the power is going to be required. And then where's the nearest power that we could pull from? And they'll have to call an ICIG and do what they do. So so we're hitting all three of those conditions and we're working towards that. And because everything takes a little time, obviously, that's why we don't think we're going to make that February twenty fourth. You guys. Now, we'll come back. We want to come back here in a month and have another one of these meetings, give you, you know, kind of information here, just what's going on. And hopefully by then we will have our final drawings because I think we need thirty days right before that, the March meeting, to to get it in or twenty days.
Thirty days, but it's twenty days or somewhere. It's inside of that.
Yeah.
The director. Be filed before the public hearing motion is made. So that'll be fifteen days.
Oh. Thirteen days.
So we were so we were hoping to have that by the twenty first of February, right?
Yes.
First twenty five.
Yeah. And now if we come present all our new findings and maybe the drawings aren't done, it sounds like we, if it's fifteen days and we even have a couple of days to go back and make the changes to the drawings and then submit to you.
If there is body of people to review them in between schedule.
Yeah, okay. Perfect, perfect. Just give us as a backstop. As a backstop. So right now, the drawings, you know, we we when we met with you, we had a lot of discussion about the traffic. And we had, we never had a loop. So we we did that. We went back and we we created, you know, it's not one way, it's two-way street, twenty-four foot wide, so you can go both directions, but we'll have two entrances and two exits. And then this way, school bus, fire truck, garbage truck, whatever comes up here does not have to do any three-point turns or or anything. So they'll they'll come in here or go out there, or they can come in here and go out there. So we listened to, you know, the comments that you guys had and we we made those changes. Other than, oh, well, because of that, we and we we added a playground and a couple of little areas, sitting areas. And because of that playground and we moved the whole structure up the hill a little bit, even though it's kind of a little more expensive to build on that hill, we wanted to put a fence around this, the retention basin. Doing a little bit of digging, we, again, we still need our our geotechnical information to know this for sure. But we feel that because of the soil type, that there's probably going to be water in there. You know, so it's not just going to be this empty retention basin that you see, but actually a pond. So you'd have water. And we'll have a bubbler in there so that, you know, it keeps the bubble of water moving. But because of that, you know, we we decided to put a fence around it, which would be probably a picket, aluminum picket fence, you know, probably four feet high, just to, you know, keep children from walking into the water, just because there's going to probably, we're we're thinking there's going to be children here at this at this complex. So with all of that, we had to move everything up. So we moved all the buildings up about twenty feet kind of up the hill. So that was one of the changes that we made on the site plan. The the lower part of the site, we really didn't change because we're not doing anything, but this is where a lot of the traffic study is going to be what, you know, what this road can handle for pedestrians and for for vehicles. So. It's really. That was really the only changes. Right? That was why I just picked site, right? We did go up, I'm going up with a forester. Right? And they started to be doing and looking at the trees and what's going on up there. And there's a lot going on up there. So we we started that process with the arborist, I guess, so he's also arborist and a horse, yes. So we we started that process. And then we made a few changes to the to the buildings and I hope you know, but before we leave the site, I just wanted to see if there were any questions.
Um. I appreciate your concern for the safety of children, et cetera. You're regarding this pond area, possible pond area. Is the, it didn't seem from the contours that there'd be a sharp drop off at the water's edge into that. And I'm thinking, Bassett already has a housing development right next to the Susquehanna River. And I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a fence there.
I think there is, actually. I mean, I used to walk up there.
There's a path along the river.
But the housing development, there's a fence from the housing development down there. There is a path along there, but from the housing development, there is a fence, I believe.
Okay, are you fencing the people in the housing area or you're fencing them out of the river? I don't know.
I think there's a fence between the the housing area and the river.
What was that fence? Was it to keep people from falling in the river?
I don't know. Not not anymore, you know, but though.
So you're questioning the need for the bouncing?
Well, it's really, I think children need to walk in the water, get their feet wet and 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 playing in streams with frogs and do all this sort of stuff. Let's not overprotect our children.
They get lots of them on.
Well, yeah, they're going to go up to this pond.
I mean. This is not a New York city or some of the countries around here. It's just a whole place. It's a supply.
Yeah, so we, so if you can, you can see by this section here, here's here's going to be the proposed buildings. And here's the slope that we're talking about. And then here's the example, we're going to try to keep the buffer, we're going to make a mound here, put evergreens, we're going to walk out there. And and then the fence, the fence is not shown, but the fence will be kind of like here and.
But I don't think that's a problem. Is that a problem?
It's.
That's stormwater catchment, it's going to be.
Oh, it's a catchment area, that's different ground.
It's it's a.
Probably a flood area. Yeah, for them to flush.
No, we, when we, when you look at the soils, if they're well draining, then it becomes, you know, a detention and it's only wet when it rains.
Is it, so is it rain garden?
But we're thinking that because of, one, the soil is more clay. We think, we haven't done the digging yet, we're just looking at maps. And also Bob went up there in our in our board of trustees meeting, there was a lot of people that talked about springs. There's some natural springs up there. And Bob went up there and he noticed that, yeah, he found the springs and it's running. So we feel that it is going to be a pond because of all that water coming from the spring and the types of soil. So.
We think there's going to be enough water in it for the majority of the year. A year that it would be safe to put a, you know, from our perspective, the same thing would be to that sex.
Because the thing is, people, their liability decisions are ours. So they they're, it's granting, it's not like their liability.
I I want to say it's not, I don't think they need to be doing something because we think it's necessary. They think it's necessary.
Exactly.
Whatever they.
Yes, this this was a decision by fashion. Yeah, so.
I I. But I I.
He's still one of them.
We're. Godly or cheating, that's what I'm saying.
We're protecting ourselves and lots of them.
I don't think we can agree all the way around.
Yeah, no, I think we all agree with you, but the lawyers have the last say in some of these things, so.
The lawyers.
We can.
Um. You want to mention, Arizona, the third, consider this structure, so they'll have to go to H Park.
They can already have her.
Yeah, once you decide what it's going to look like, you can come back for a field change.
Yeah.
Yes, because we told them about the fence, we told them what it was going to look like, they approved it. And they 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 did, they gave us the certificate of appropriateness. We do have that. Yeah. So and when we're done, we are going to have them review our final lines and what they have to talk. So. Um. Okay. Any other questions on the site? So the buildings. We worked hard to to keep these buildings under thirst peak. And our original drawings that we showed you had our, I'm sorry, I should have.
No, that's okay, it's not really a great place for you to go, so.
So we we had the original drawings that we showed you had thirty feet to the very top of the chimneys. So Jackson sent us the real definition of building height, and it is to the average height of the roof, of a slope roof or the top of a flat roof. Okay? And chimneys are not part of that calculation. So in effect, the the height is to the middle of the of the slope. And that most, a lot of towns have that and and we sometimes, every town is a little different, every village is a little different. So some go to the top, some go to the average. I'm glad you guys go to the average because, you know, I went down to to Burnley Over and I'm standing and I'm looking at their chimneys. And they're at least forty feet. I mean, there's no way there's thirty feet.
It may have been built before the current.
It it probably was.
Different, so.
Yeah, so whatever, I mean, I was just trying to, I mean, the whole thing here is we're we're trying to kind of not match Burnley Over, but kind of have that feel, right?
I wasn't here at the time. There was a coordinated building, so. It had its own rules.
Oh, like BUD, like a planned.
Yeah, it's plenty.
I see. I see. Okay. And we didn't do that here. So so with the new definition, we were able to, because I was a little nervous because we're going with eight, you know, and it is an apartment building, eight foot ceiling, that's we always like to go eight, six, nine. And then your structure ends up being a foot, which, you know, how do you get duct work in there? So making this change to the to the buildings was was great. So these are the drawings that we showed each car with the higher, the the greater height, our top, for here's the townhouse, the top of our place, twenty-one foot six, and then our thirty, there are twenty, it's about twenty-nine, twenty-eight feet. Actually, no, on the townhouse, it was only like twenty-six feet to the middle. So we're well under our thirty based on that definition. But now we get nine-foot ceilings and the lower floor, we can get some nice structure, room for duct work and everything else. The other thing, somebody. Yep.
Clear. The drawings don't show the chimneys, you didn't lose the chimneys to them.
The chimneys do show.
I haven't seen them.
They're right there. Yes, no.
No, we can see it better in these.
Yeah, the chimneys.
It's my eyes.
One, the chimneys do, they are actually working, they're not working chimneys for our fireplace, but we're going to have all our flues go up for our all our vents, for our plumbing vents and vents for mechanical systems. So, yeah, mechanical chase. So we're, actually, those, you know, lines will go up into the attic space and then go over in the hall. So so we are, we need those. Let me see, the other thing on the plan that we added was we're each one of these units going to have a concrete pad, little patio. Right now, we're showing them it tends to be eight by twelve feet wide. You know, most of the patio that we do for apartments aren't that big, there's some of them are eight or six even, you know, by twelve feet wide. So it may get smaller, but we wanted to kind of show that this is the most that it'll be, but that's what we're, we're providing a little patio in the back of of each townhouse. So that, those were the only changes to the drawings that that you guys said have not seen yet, so. So I wanted to show you that. And then on the apartment building, we we added some roofs, we added a water room for when the water comes down from the the new tank and goes into here, we'll have an RPC, like a backflow preventer and our sprinkler mains and everything else will come into this room. It 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 may be flipped, it may be in this room. And then we put in a bike storage, that was something that was brought up, and so we wanted to kind of have a little storage area for the tenants, for exterior storage. Those rooms may get bigger. Now that we have a mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineer on board, we had a kickoff meeting, I showed it all, here's mechanical space, here's. I could hear him saying, you know, it's not big enough, not big enough, so. So that, so that that may, that those may may get bigger, but, you know, the overall footprint is really not going to change. You know, it might, these these might get a little bit bigger, a little bit bigger than. Hopefully by next month, we'll have all that, you know, we'll know exactly our footprint, exactly the elevations, and we'll have any any changes to that. When we got our certificate of appropriateness, we we talked about the types of signing that we're doing. And it's going to be, it'll be a clapboard signing. Right now, we're planning on using like a hardened board, which is a cement board. And what else we talked about? Oh, roofs, I brought samples, the roof is just a an asphalt single, like an architectural asphalt single. And trim was all going to be hardened board. The windows were, we were looking at either a Marvin or, you know, it could be an Anderson or something, you know, like that. One of the things that was was brought up was sustainability. And so we are really seriously considering the geothermal to do a geothermal loop. But we don't want to say we're doing that yet because we want to get our geo-geotechnical information first before we do that. So, yeah, and then so the change on this elevation for the apartments is the same as the townhomes. We we raised this up. Again, it's about twenty-two feet to the to the top plate, so this is a bigger roof. So, you know, it's about twenty-nine, you know, twenty-nine and six or something like that to the to the average. So. So now they do comply with our, with the with that code that Jackson sent to us. And I think they look better because we changed them, we've had a four-on-twelve pitch and we made them all six-on-twelve now, so it's a little steeper. I think if you go around the village, most of the the houses and the character of the village, it has, you know, steeper pitch roofs than a real flat pitch, so. And we brought that up with H Park. They they agreed with with the design, so. Will there be EV charging stations on this? Um. We hadn't planned on that, but that's something that we'll have to talk to Bassett.
Oh, yeah, we we.
You want that, right?
We need to look at that, yes, you know, in that some of our sites, the people that go in here as well.
Yeah. Most of the projects that we've been, you know, we've been doing now, if it's a new build, you have to do at least two, you know, two EV apartments business. Yeah, yeah. So we will look at that and, you know, maybe we'll have two over here and one or two over here too, you know, so.
Oh, yeah, most of the sets live in town or going back to work fast, probably.
Really?
Or they're retired or they're.
Yeah.
Trucks, a lot of people have, but it's not just Tesla.
Right.
Leaves and everything else, and that's the way, that's the way the future is going.
Yeah, it's definitely challenging, it's counting, you must all be around that with the people wanting that, so, yeah.
So what what do you?
I'm just saying, we're planning for the future.
Yeah.
I mean, planning for this year, maybe I would say by the sixth, but, you know, you have to think of the future, that's all I'm saying. As you might have a phase-in plan over the, you know, put in a certain number to begin with and then phase in others as, you know, you guys know your needs for, but I think there are a large number delivered in cars in the village.
Yeah, we were actually, we saw, and we visited that site last week. And we were talking with him about how he was managing it there, you know, how, you know, the way he's setting up.
Yeah, it's just, you know, the car charge is two hours and four hours, and I actually have to move it after those four hours.
But they're just sitting there, yeah. That's the parking space for the night.
Right, exactly, so. Or they're gone to parent, they're just. So it's just. It's just the way of the future.
It is the way of the future, and we we will, we will add that. I just want to make sure that we discuss it with Bassett on the number.
They're dumb.
I don't want to spend your money, you know.
On a similar note, just in personal curiosity, was the sort of study down on how whether or not solar panels would be long-term effective for these solar groups of these sites?
We we have not done, we've not done a study on it.
Sure.
That was another thing, actually, when we met with Doc and we were looking at this, so they're being, and, you know, you can't really see that until you actually look for them, but um, yes, and that's something, you know, we will study as well to ensure that it's feasible.
Because you're planning now that rent's included, I mean, the utilities are included in rent, so it's in Bassett's interest.
Steel assumption.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. It's a free study.
I can't wait till they start putting those solar panels on top of cars, you know, so you don't need the AV stations, you can empower it right there.
They have roofs, I was already.
They they have a car, there's a, there was, I think, kind of contrast, I think it was the Netherlands, that this company, they made all the paint, the whole car was made out of solar. It looked, it was ugly, it was super ugly. But the thing was driving down the road and he's like charging while he's driving down the road. So he's using less energy. He's gaining more energy, I was like, this is awesome, you know? But I don't know, it was so ugly.
It makes them look a little better.
Yes, yes. It's the eye, the beauty's in the eye of the baller, right? And and who's paying for the gas or the power, yeah? So so, yeah, that's that's something that I think very soon will be, you know, those EV stations, power stations may not be even needed, we'll see. Right? So we are looking at that. Like I said, we're looking at geothermal, we're looking at making these buildings better than code, kind of the the New York State has a stretch code that has examples of how to how to be more green, making the envelope a little bit more insulated.
Are you doing any LEED certification?
We weren't planning on doing LEED, LEED really doesn't get you anything, and there's a lot of paperwork that you have to fill out and.
It's the same principles.
It's the same principles, yeah. We would like to do kind of the principles of LEED without doing the LEED because there's wasted money and certifications and things. But to, you know, you know, building code, you know, for this building would be, you know, required as R thirteen and inside the inside the the stud cavity and then like R. Inside the the stud cavity and then like R uh five outside it, you know, which is an inch of insulation, you know, maybe we'll do. Inch and a half insulation, spray foam on the, so we're just, we're kind of looking at ways of making this. Better than code. And even though the energy code now is pretty, pretty robust, it's it's uh it's pretty tough to just meet code, you know, uh that after that last. Change to the energy code. So but we're, we wanna meet, we're gonna be better than code. That, and again, it goes back to, you know, Bassett's paying for the the electricity, so it makes makes sense to. Put some money into it and get a better product out for future. So is there anything else that we need to share? Okay, I kind of covered everything. Do you have any other questions?
Um mail, is that each building have its own mail center or the mailbox is gonna be out of enable road for everybody or?
So right now, we're planning on having, there's a mail room for the apartment building. And. Right here. Um, so they, and there's a door from the vest build. So this door is gonna be, you know, somebody comes to see somebody, that door will be protected, maybe they have to buzz in or. But the mailman uh or mail person could come in here, go in and put the mail in there and the mailboxes would be in that room. Um, and there's usually a lot of boxes for U P S that could go in. But for the uh the townhomes. We were gonna put a, the X outside like right here. And for this, for this building and right here for this building would be, it's only six. Yes, a post, six boxes. Uh mail, mail person would have the the key, open it up, throw it in. Yeah, so so those would be outside, apartment will lean inside. Packages would end up on the stupid chest.
Something I saw recently with an apartment building, which I was interested in, in their mailroom, they have more boxes. Packaged those in a box, you know.
Okay. Yeah, the the other thing that we we did on our last apartment building was put a refrigerator in there. Because people get stuff that needs to be refrigerated. And then it's like, okay, how do you, so, but that that becomes on the owner's system because nobody's gonna lock, you know, the refrigerator. Well, actually, maybe you should talk to Bassett because they.
Somebody has an expertise in that.
Yeah, yeah, but that's the next, next step because people get like all this food. That's true.
But that comes in a. Anyone like sixteen styrofoam like. Things like this, my wife can't throw it into that.
Taking down the unsevered.
With ice fat. And so I, I mean, it wouldn't be to.
Right, right, right. But the 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 reason we. Is these hell of fresh and, you know, all these, these food.
Okay, um in the trustees, the minutes or whatever, maybe these in this uh. Conditions or somewhere I read, and I could be wrong, that the tank, water tank. Would replace the smaller tank. So those smaller tanks will be removed and would just be one tank up there that will serve all the fiber shell.
So that is true, but so what we proposed was to bypass the existing tank. Put in a larger tank that would feed this complex, plus it would feed back into the whole vill- village system. Give it then an upgraded tank um that would all be up. Modernized with remote access for turning pumps on, matter of time, the levels and everything in the tanks.
This, this will increase water pressure then throughout the village, right? Because this is much higher up.
That that's an engineering question. I would say yes, because we're looking at more valuable water, which means more pressure. But I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, because I I remember from. When I was in school and all cities or whatever have a tank applied. May, it it doesn't have to be the entire amount of water, but if you have a certain amount of water up here, it raises the pressure throughout the entire system.
Yes, yeah.
So.
So in a system like that, we wouldn't have regulators installed so that we don't overpressurize, put too much pressure in the house and blow like. It would be regulated so you can't just. Now, the pressure's a good thing, but if it is, you you can get too much of a good thing, right? Um, so we will, they will have to put in the regulator. Regulators so that it doesn't overpressurize the whole system.
Okay.
Not just the individual houses with the pipes.
I live in an old house and, you know, I got resonating pipes already, which is annoying. I can't figure out how to, but you know.
And it actually worked out easier to implement that design than to try to tie it in with the X, the existing tank. Upgrading those pumps and then pumps from there to the pump. It it's actually, you can, the cost savings, the village ends up with a. New monitoring system.
It will, it will be better.
Now, we have not talked about moving the existing tanks, so. Those are alone in the village, that's really not our.
Right, so that that'll stay there empty, I I guess.
I'm telling you, until the village decides. Yeah, I can't say on that. Yeah, that's, that's the. Okay, we weren't planning.
Now, this is probably getting ahead of myself, but I always do that. These, you have three buildings, both, yeah, three basically buildings. Are they gonna be numbered, named after. Famous Basset doctors or something or, and you know, when you write a letter, is it gonna be apartment A? Uh, building A, apartment three and and building B or or are you gonna have the wild apartment? Uh, or the wild apartment, whatever, you know, like it, how are you.
So yeah, so. Kevin talks specifically, but for example, currently we have four quads and we have the A quad, B quad, C quad and T quad, and then there's ten apartments. So if you wanna send mail to somebody, you send it to ten currently drive apartment C one. Um, so, so yeah, we haven't quite figured out our nomenclature or the yet, but probably gonna be.
The only thing we did find out was the address. That we're using four nine one one is fifty-one thirty-eight in the row. Now, we could call this fifty-one thirty-eight. And this one fifty-one thirty-nine and that one, and then get into apartment A, B and C.
That makes more sense.
Right.
I mean, just for for nine one one.
Nine one one is usually the one that they're gonna approve it or not, right? And they're the ones who are gonna tell us, no, you have to do this.
Is it fifty-one thirty-eight because across the street's fifty-one forty? Is that, you're locked into that number, right?
Um, across the street would be odd, I think.
Yeah, oh, yeah, excuse me, yeah, yeah, for fifty-one.
Yes, that's all.
You can't say let's make it four hundred.
No, 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 you have, you're, no, no, that's, we didn't make that up. That that was given to us.
By?
By nine one one. By the county.
County, county.
Yeah, okay.
Will there be some sort of uh signage on April Road?
Yes.
But beyond that, will there be a?
So the buildings, I would assume are gonna be. Whether it's numbered or ladder, just for access for, you know, the ambulance seems to go to. Quad A, well, which one is A of the real one, or the real all of these.
It's not gonna be like, you know, early over April, like or whatever.
There's gonna have to be something out there, something so that people know where.
Numbers, like you're not gonna have like a a name of the development.
Yeah.
One last thing to refuse, one more sign.
Yeah. You get free hospitalization for a year, right? Your naming rights.
Intimidating.
Okay, can we um? So. I don't have any more questions. It's like, yeah, is this.
Yep, it is. Are you wondering about the red line across the the secondary or any exit? Uh, maybe it's because we don't, we don't know where it is.
Line, the red line is underground, that is warm water button. Yeah, so so and then there's, there's, see that, that's, that's, well, this, it's just so small, you can't see it. So, uh, the blue is the domestic water coming down. So, yeah, this is really small to do that, but that will be gonna come down. It comes down here and it cleats the buildings. Uh, the red is storm. There's a green line in there as well, and that's sanitary. And you can see the sanitary line going down here and it's gonna pack into the. Yeah, with the green line, the red line and the green, right?
That's like the Washington D C metro system.
Any other questions? Any questions here?
No, I don't think so.
No, I just, I think that, you know, next, next meeting. Do the same. Um, and hopefully we'll have the drawings further ahead. Hopefully we'll have more information. Um, but it it again, it's all about getting up there, cutting some trees down, doing our testing and hopefully we'll have all that done.
And so you're be shooting for March twenty-first.
We're shooting for March twenty-first as our public hearing.
In the site plan checklist, there anything, anybody feels like they need more info on like uh. Landscaping plan, planting list.
And I don't know that we're at the landscaping.
Right.
Because they, they just have a forest are going up there now.
Yeah.
So it's really hard to know if lands here, they won't be actually able to see situation is.
Yeah.
With the idea of retaining as many trees as, you know, possible. So those long areas, definitely more.
So we should have some type of landscaping plan for next month. Is that what you're saying? Okay, okay. Anything else that uh you see that we don't have?
Really was non, non basis.
Uh, lighting, right, do you need uh wood candle, lighting analysis as well, right?
And ideally the, if you have the lighting, you know, the lighting fixtures that you know you're gonna be using. The the general style.
But we do, we're gonna try to match what's up there um around the hospital.
But just to refer, the blue that you're.
Yes, yes, we will, yeah. A-actually, I do think.
So yeah, just the the specs for the light. Design, just so we can see is it. Dark sky.
Dark sky compliant, it'll help me, yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, that was a discussion at H Park. They were recommended lower follow lights. You really wanna use the lights that we wanna use um as long as they're compliant or open that, you guys will be okay with that.
As long, as long as the screening is such, I mean, it looks like it will be, we're going to do it free. The screening with the trees, it won't approach on a neighbor, you know, on a neighbor's.
Yeah, so, right.
That's I think the biggest concern about the toilet.
Yeah.
But as spring likes to walk, it's nice to have light in sidewalks.
Yeah.
Is there, are there any plans to develop any of the other property for walking paths or anything like that?
Okay, I don't wanna say there's any plans, but. When you get, we have, I have that, though, it's a beautiful old established woods that. Could lead to that. Right now, we're not, we've got a bunch of looking in right now that we can't.
Oh, when you get beyond this area where Jesse Ravage kind of called it the plantation where you you can tell, I mean, if we actually, I was. Up in there, I mean, we walk up and I'll be like, with my boots, but. See very distinctly the, you have the dead trees.
Yeah.
And then you get up in there and it's gorgeous. I mean, there's big, really nice. A lot too. I mean, it's not all, you know, completely wooded where you can't and we did where you just can't walk. It's really nice, but I think, I mean.
Yeah.
Could kind of be able to find there, you know, walk around and. I don't know if we're gonna need that or, you know, as far as paths and stuff.
People disagree their own.
Yeah, it's kind of open something there that you can.
Yeah.
Figure it out and.
I mean, you can. Could follow the road only to get up to where it's really good and then take off as there isn't, gonna be no fence that, the only fence we're gonna have up here. Is keeping people away from the water tower, right? And um there'll be a light up here for the the water tower and the equipment up there. Uh, but we weren't planning on putting lights here um at all. Um, and uh, and and and, you know, this is gonna be a a road, but you know. So we we weren't planning on like designing walking paths. Um, but it it may come up and it 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 may be, we do it after, you know, after we get the buildings built.
Have you been in touch with the fire team?
So. Yeah, yes, Scott, I believe um our engineer has reached out to them.
Made initial contact.
Yeah, I I know he tried to talk, to reach out and they were gonna call back or something, but we've tried. Yeah, we'll follow up on that. Because we do wanna make sure that. You know, even though our engineers have put in a. They have this program that shows, you know, the right turning radius for a fire truck and um. And this all meets based on that, but we always, we always talk to the fire marshal before we, you know. Before you guys will give us a per, you know, permit. We usually have to do that, so we will do that.
All right. Is there anybody in the room? Be interested in going and monkeying the project?
Where are your boots?
Yeah, it might be frozen now, obviously.
Yeah.
How many minutes till that?
There was nine of my water up there that I found with tick eyes, so.
Oh, yeah, no, they don't, they don't ever die.
They're not, they're last hits up there.
They'll be not die. Um, I have tics right in my car. Did you wanna do it as a group or?
I think it'd be you.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's the guy right here.
The bigger issue was.
Jackson, did you?
You don't have boots?
So I will say, once you get off the road, it's very difficult walking. There's that many trees down.
Yeah.
And it's that covered with.
It's not, I will say, it's not horrible, but. Yeah, wear your boots and be careful, please.
My boots.
It's not, it's not really, I mean.
We will do it at our own risk.
Yes. Um, but it it's not horrible and you're not walking up against a ton of brush where you're, make sure you're getting ticks all over yourself. There, you can get through there. Okay.
That's not where you go, but yes, it can be that.
Let's still do the ticks, right?
There you go.
Yeah.
And then when you, when you're driving up there, or when you're looking to the right, you're gonna see a bunch of pink ribbons. That's what the survey. They're kind of marked where the edge is, so you can see where it starts. It's like right here, you're gonna see a pink ribbon out. So that's what you know. So the ribbon that is tied to the tree, it comes down to a metal stake. It's very easy to see corners. That's where it starts if somebody goes up prior to, yeah, get together as a group. Even if you just do a drive-by, you'll see the driven by.
We're gonna ride our bikes then.
Riding.
All right. Yeah, that's the, that's what a plot is. Oh, yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for your time. I think I've been on security now. Spending the schedule, Monday to Friday. Seven to four o'clock, pretty much my hours. And I do have a few days that we can work around that.
Yeah.
Everybody's saying, whatever working. I hadn't heard that yet.
So, yeah. All right, so what are we, we are not saying a public hearing or? So.
Before you adjourn, I ask. We all, and it's, I, I suspect it's because of. Were combined with other boards, I have a couple emails. Does that, is, is what you said to us, Josh, is reply. To, uh, our miss response regarding the lighting at. Is that, and that's something that we have to deal with, is it?
I think that, I was just trying to keep everybody in the loop with that, um.
Is we approved.
Yeah. So, so far.
Was that? There was those little chowders, I went over there during the day, I went over there at night, I went over there.
Does he have them turned back on?
Yeah. It just doesn't help right there, and, um, but, you know, if it was even when you're on, I don't know. I don't know that it's necessary, and it may be lighting over to the spot that's right on just that, you know.
Rightly, I wish I had more lighting than weather.
I wish I had more on Ellen, just like Hannah.
Yeah, this is a dark village.
Yes, the streets are bulleted and the cars, but not the best.
I was actually told when I first moved here that. In order to save money. They had a program, they did. Try to, just live here for a bit. Uh, even though all the lines, street lines.
No, no, they're pretty bright, they.
But we had one.
Well, my, my concern is more walking at night. On the sidewalks, because, and I have to walk my dog at, you know, five o'clock on December, hey.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I have the knee damage to prove it, um. So, because of the uneven sidewalks and the dark, the areas aren't lit, especially when the leaves is below the trees, but it's dark out. And, um, and then you really can't see the sidewalks, so people drive because they don't want. Because they don't trust the sidewalk.
Well, it's just lighting is a safety and a security issue.
Well, it's, it's a safety, not really a big security issue for this village, you know, let's be real, we don't have a lot of.
Well, I think it's true.
No, it's, it's, it's a tricky task, I mean.
Yeah, because sidewalks can be in all the parts.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying, I don't consider the security license. Right, when I see this is a safety issue, just, you know, walking, because I have a problem, I mean, I have a complete city problem, I don't know, the bulk of my. Floating me pictures, I'm like, this is my walking there, man. As I'm headed to the.
I'm still driving to Sydney to. On Pioneer Street where.
It's a lovely idea, I'd make a motion which I'd be.